I'd like to call together the regular meeting of the Farver School Committee for Monday, October 17th. Adeb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Draghi.
Here.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Harp.
Here.
Ms. LaRavi.
Here.
Ms. Pereira. Ms. Roderick.
Yeah.
Ms. Coogan.
Here. We're also joining us tonight is our student delegate Samantha Aguirre.
Hello.
Welcome. Okay, so just to make sure we do announce it because I don't want to do something wrong. I'm believing that Shelley Pereira will be joining us by Zoom shortly. Let's do a salute to the flag. Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to the Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meetings through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens' input. We have one gentleman with us tonight, John Silva, Rock Street, Fall River.
Hello. Here to talk about the parent tools that we no longer have. For the last couple of years, we had Aspen, which we were able to see the assignments, the grades. So you weren't surprised at the end. We don't have that right now this year. You know, I used to live in Google Classroom and Aspen and pay attention to what was due, what was turned in, what was not. And for the first half term here, I'm flying blindly. So my grandson's in eighth grade. This is a crucial year with grades, and I stay on top of it. Both my husband and I stay on top of his education. And, you know, to walk in and wait until you get a progress report is not acceptable when you're really trying to keep on top of your grades. I guess for the last, a message came from a music teacher saying, hey, you know, grades are due, this assignment's due. So I talked to him, your assignment all set? No. What's the matter? For five weeks, I've been sitting in the wrong music class. The classrooms are right next to each other. And I'm like, what do you mean? He's like, yeah, I've been going to the wrong class. Just today, they told me I need to go in the other class. I was frustrated. I'm like, I said, they must take attendance. So I emailed the teacher, and she supported it. She says, that's correct. The other music teacher's going to transfer the grades, and, you know, going forward, I guess we'll be fine. But obviously, if I didn't know this at first, the grades weren't transferred. And what I expected, he got an F in that class because he wasn't in that class. That's disturbing, you know? I could see being in the wrong class the first week or so, but the term's half over. And if I had access to the parent tools, then I would be on, I would say, do you got this assignment? We would have picked up on it beforehand. So I'm just, I gotta reach out to the school tomorrow to, you know, make some adjustments here. But not having access to these tools because he's also on an IEP, you know, it's frustrating when you're trying to be on top of stuff. So I just felt I needed to, I'm sure he's not the only one, I'm the only one here who's speaking about it. So that's my input today.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Thank you.
Mr. Silva, I just want to respond to you. I, first of all, I apologize that your son was in the wrong class and we didn't note that. So we will get that fixed immediately. But as far as the parent tool, Power School is supposed to go live this week for parents. It's taken longer than we anticipated, but that is supposed to go live so that parents can have access to their child's grade. I will follow up with you, but that is supposed to be happening this week.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, recognition awards?
No.
Oh, Mr. Aguirre?
On that same note, I believe the gentleman mentioned Google Classroom. Are we not using Google Classroom anymore?
Right. What he's referring to is Google Classroom. When we were hybrid or remote, that's where teachers would post the work through Google Classroom. We're not doing remote learning, so they're not using it as they did last year.
Right. What I was told is not all the kids have their Chromebooks, so you gotta mix them in the class. So they're not posting everything in Google Classroom. So at one time, we'd be, just as you said, the assignment's in Google Classroom, then you can match it up in Aspen, so you know when it was, if it was turned in, what the grade was, things like that. So not everything's in Google Classroom today. So Aspen would have been the main tool for me to live in to make sure his assignments are done.
Yes. My feeling on it is we should be using Google Classroom. That's a good tool to use. It's not, we don't just use Google Classroom because there was a pandemic. We use Google Classroom because it's a good mechanism to get the parents and students on track, to keep them on track. So this is alarming to me to hear that we're not using it or whatever that excuse was, whoever told you that, please let the superintendent know. Because anybody in this district should not ever be telling a parent, a guardian, or anyone that we don't have a Chromebook for every student. That is not accurate. That's not right. And please pass the information on so that superintendent can correct it because we've spent millions of dollars on technology, and Mr. Cabral is in charge of that. We've been assured that everybody has a Chromebook. We have loaners available when they're not. So the systems are in place. So whoever told you that, please report to the superintendent so she can report back to us. Thank you. Are you?
Thank you. We have a few recognition awards tonight. Should we go down to the podium, Superintendent?
Yes, student recognition.
Student recognition.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're going to award three students in an award that the Mass Association of School Superintendents has designated, this award for academic excellence. The award goes to students who have chosen, shown distinction in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. The number of awards each district receives is based on the number of anticipated graduates. Fall River Public Schools has received three awards to present this year. The criterion for the award is as follows: three-year cumulative average, rank in the class, personal selection by the superintendent or designee. The superintendent has leeway among the top 5% for his or her personal selection. The three students being recognized tonight are Brady Lavoy, Brooke Macedo, and Amelia Dias. They have been identified using the criteria above. It's intentionally been designed to make these presentations at the beginning of the school year so that they can use this citation as part of their credentials. So tonight, I'm going to share a little bit about each of them, familiar with them. So first off, we have Brady Lavoy. Brady has been achieving academic excellence since entering the GATE program in the fourth grade. He's currently ranked number one in the senior class. His course load has been rigorous as he has taken multiple advanced placement courses. He completed all AP math courses at Durfee, and this year is attending Bridgewater State University's dual enrollment program to take discrete mathematics. He further his working on a project concerning high-performing computing, which is currently in its infancy, but showing promise as a potential school project. Brady is actively involved in student government, serving as a student body treasurer. He is a varsity athlete on the cross-country, winter track, and volleyball teams, and is a MIAA sports ambassador. Brady hopes to attend MIT or WPI to double major in computer science and robotics engineering. Brady, come on up. So our next recipient is Amelia Dias. Amelia is currently ranked third in the class. Amelia has been the captain for the Durfee girls soccer team for the past two years. She has an adamant dedication to her academics as well as her successes on the field. She plans on pursuing the college education in neuroscience and becoming either a lab technician or a research scientist. Amelia is also a dedicated member of many clubs here at Durfee, some including National Honor Society, the Sixth Man Club, History Abroad, and the Ski-Snowboarding Club. At the end of her junior year, she won the Harvard Chapter Book Award and Outstanding Student in World Languages. She is also proudly an active worker and volunteer for the Fall River Youth Soccer Association, coaching and roughing youth players in our city to strengthen the love for soccer in our community. Come on up, Amelia. Congratulations. And I'm not sure if Brooke is here, third recipient. Brooke Macedo is ranked number two in the senior class. She is an early college scholar who has been excelling academically since freshman year. Her course load has been rigorous as she has taken eight advanced placement courses and nine dual enrollment courses through BCC. She is not only a leader in the classroom, but outside of the classroom, on the playing fields, and in the community. Brooke is president of the National Honor Society, captain of the varsity field hockey team, and has been a manager at two jobs that she has held. She furthermore has chosen, was chosen to do an internship over the summer with Johnson &amp; Johnson as part of her biocompatibility team. These accomplishments only highlight a snippet of various clubs, activities, and employment opportunities that Brooke has dedicated her time and energy to. She has also done well over 100 hours of community service, helping the homeless and doing her part to keep the environment clean. Brooke would like to attend Boston University and major in chemistry or pre-med track to becoming Dr. Brooke Macedo, anesthesiologist. Congratulations, Brooke. Congratulations to the recipients and their families.
Subcommittee reports. We have Parent and Community Outreach.
That's me. We met on October 5th. We had reviewed an update on Parent Square. It sounds like that rollout has actually gone quite well. We had, Mr. Cabral could probably speak better to this, but we had about 94% of our families enrolled on Parent Square, and that was as of a couple of weeks ago. So I only anticipate that that number's higher. We had an update on the community facilitator position, where most of our positions are filled. Folks are getting acclimated to those new roles. I know that there's been a lot of getting them familiar with the resources out in the community and getting them familiar with the culture of their individual schools. We highlighted some of the prioritized needs for this academic year, which included, I mean, we always have a lot of things that we're prioritizing, but we really focused on parent-child, parent-school engagement, and we had focused on creating a culture of inclusion and belonging through a lot of the anti-bullying practices and initiatives that are going on throughout the district. That played into the last component where we had really looked at some of the components, the initiatives that we really need to look at throughout the community in terms of combating some of that conflict and understanding of what bullying is and what it's not. So we anticipate that we'll meet in another month and check in to see where we're at and develop next steps.
Thank you, Sarah. Superintendent's report. Ms. Park?
Yes. So first of all, I would like to do just a quick data overview. Certainly, our intention is to come back before this committee next month with a more comprehensive data report by school, et cetera. But I know that I sent you all some information, but I think that the public also needs to know the information that's out there, as well as to where we stand. So the data was released and is now posted on the DESI website. Our parents will be receiving their child's results this week as we receive them and send them out to schools to be distributed. Our Fall River Public School data is consistent with statewide data in that we have a very long way to go in our recovery process. In a typical year, we struggle and we lag, and after two and a half years of disruption, it is no secret that that would have an impact on our kids. All data is to be viewed as baseline data across the state. All of the data is, this is year one as the state is seeing it. Our 2019 was the last time where there was a full MCAS administration, 2019, because 2020, no tests were administered because that was the year that we shut down. 2021, only half of the tests was administered, and that was also administered in various ways. Kids took it from home, or they took it in school. So that was different. And in 2022, this is where we resumed back to full MCAS administration. One thing that is glaring, a piece of data that is glaring at us, is that student absenteeism remains a huge challenge across the board. Urban districts report a 39% chronically absent average, while Fall River Public Schools is at 48% chronically absent. Those are kids that are missing 10% or more of the school year, 18 or more days. Our kids need to be in school. They can't learn if they're not here. And we need to work with families, as well as with students, in order to bring them into school. Average days missed in Fall River Public Schools in 2022 was 21 as compared to 13 in 2019. The percent of students missing 10% or more was 48%, as I've just said, as compared to 25% in 2019, 25% double. ELA grades in grades three to eight, we had 22% of our students who met or exceeded expectations as compared to 34% in 2019. The urban districts, we compare to the urban districts because it's important for us to look at like districts, 27%, we still lag behind them. 27% met or exceeded as compared to 38. They also, we saw significant slips. We saw significant dips in meeting and exceeding in grades three, four, five, and six. Grade three, the first time they took the MCAS. Kindergarten was their typical year. Grade one, we shut down. Grade two was their hybrid year, and grade three was the year of full return that they were tested. All of that, we have to take into account, right? Our kids, our third graders, took MCAS for the first time and really had disruption in the most formative years that prepares them for reading, to learn. Grades 10 ELA, 34% met or exceeded as compared to 38% in 2019, only a four-point difference there. In math, grades three to eight, only 20% of our students are meeting or exceeding in 2022 as compared to 32% in 2019. Urban districts, right along with us, 23% as compared to 34% in 2019. Like ELA, we saw significant dips in grades three, four, five, and six. Grade 10 math, 24% are meeting and exceeding as compared to 29% in 2019, starting to close a little bit of that gap. And in science, grade five, 23% met or exceeded as compared to 26% in 2019. And urban's was 26% as compared to 33. Science, grade eight, we saw 14%. That's a huge concern, meeting and exceeding as compared to 25% in 2019. Our student growth percentiles, which is one of the things that we really should look at closely to see if our kids grew, even though they may not have met it, but we need to make sure that kids are moving along. 2022, our mean SGP, or student growth percentile, it was 45% in ELA, grades three to eight, as compared to, and 41% in grade 10. And in math, it was 43. And in grade 10 math, it was 36. The range, the typical range is 40 to 60. And if we're going to move our district and move our kids, we need to be, we can't be in the range. Because to be between 40 and 60 SGP, we're just maintaining where we are. We need to work harder and be above 60 in order to start closing some gaps for SGP. So we have work that needs to be done. I'm never going to stand here and pretend that it's all good. It's not good, and it just highlights the work that needs to be done. So we do have some, the school percentiles, our schools are ranked by percentile. I will say, highlight Spencer Warden continues to lead our district in the 53rd percentile, so great work being done over there. And Henry Lord Community School exited the bottom 10% and is now in the 12th percentile. And that's huge because going up any point, it's hard. It's hard work, and you really have to bring a mass of students. So, and I know that they had been working, I was there when Principal Bronhardt spoke to staff about that. Certainly, we know that 12th percentile, we have a long way to go, but moving out of that bottom 10, that's a huge, huge accomplishment. Watson also went from the 6th percentile to the 10th percentile, which, they're still at the 10th, but it also signals to us that they're getting ready to exit, which is also great news for us. We know that we've seen some good stuff happening there. We do have some concerns. In particular, CUS dipped from the 14th percentile to the 8th percentile, which is a concern. So we have some work to do there. DORAN dipped from the 31st percentile to the 20th percentile. I have met with those principals. Sylvia dipped from the 38th percentile to the 17th percentile. So we've been doing data dives at the schools each week. We target several schools, and we've been going in there, meeting with their instructional team, with the principal, their department heads, our team, digging into the data, making some assumptions, observations, and then figuring out how do we problem solve together and how do we support the schools in moving forward. So we are continuing to do that. We have three this week. We are continuing to do that through the month of October. And when we come back, we'll have some next steps as to what we're doing as a result of the meeting. Short-term goals are being planned as a result of the findings, and we'll have the comprehensive data presentation at the next month. That's it for data.
Why don't we hold off on that because there is a question on data. I just want to remind people that Shelley Pereira has joined despite Zoom, and I see her on the screen there. Hope you're all right, Shail. Any questions on data?
I don't have a question.
Well, it's not specifically on data, or it could be. But Madam Superintendent, you mentioned the chronic absenteeism. What I want to know, because it's been an ongoing problem before you, the superintendent, and before I was on the school committee, and many members here, what, and it's a major issue, so what are we doing to combat that? And are you going to get your leadership team together to maybe come, maybe look at things that aren't working, and maybe we can come up with other solutions?
And that's what we've been doing as part of our data dives, talking about all data, not just, we, let's look at, 48% is a huge number, and we had made strides in attendance decreasing those numbers over several years, and certainly, the pandemic has highlighted. We also, let's not forget, we told people, if you're sick, you need to stay home, right? So that's factored in. But we have to get kids back into the routine of being in school every day. We have to, like, every school has a student support team that they review, and they've targeted kids who are on the cusp of becoming chronically absent and that they're working in small group with and working with families. We also have resurrected the attendance task force. Ms. Kudo and I met, went over the people that were inviting to be on that team to involve the community also. So we'll have some specific information and next steps in regards to the data when we do our next more comprehensive data presentation.
And are there any, like, cities our size or gateway cities that are doing something right and that have a good absenteeism rate, or is it across the board?
Well, I think that, as I shared with you, the urban superintendents, I'm part of the urban superintendents network, so you have urban districts, Chelsea, Lynn, you know, Brockton, New Bedford, et cetera. And the average chronic absenteeism for urban districts is 39%. And as we're doing all the other data, we're lagging behind. We're at 48%. That's not an area we want to lead the pack in, right? We don't want to be ahead of the pack here. So we have to learn best practices from one another, and we have to put some systems in place to support students being in school. We can't do the work. We have, and I will say, I'm not going to, we're going to talk more deeply about data, but I'm not going to sit here and say, you know, yes, the data's not good. But the data, we have to support our, we've invested a lot with curriculum. We've invested in building capacity of our teachers. We have incredible, incredibly dedicated staff that come to work. It's not easy to work in an urban district. They come to work every day. They want to do what's best for kids. We need to support them in doing that work. And we need to prepare our kids. Our teachers have to do the content piece, but they also have to work in preparing kids socially and emotionally. We have to make sure our kids are ready to learn. And in many, many cases, our kids are not coming to school ready to learn. So it's a twofold thing that has to work hand in hand.
No, I agree. And just one other thing that I emailed you maybe a few days ago about the really bad weather we had with the rain. And there was an issue at Tanzi, where a couple, a few parents called me about being out in the rain before school. And I think the teacher or the principal didn't let them in until it was too, you know, until everybody got really wet. And it's going to be, this is going to, it's going to happen during the winter season, whether it's raining or cold. Is there, and I'm sure it's across the district, it happens, but can we make sure that that doesn't happen again?
Well, it's a supervision issue.
Right.
Right? Because then it will become morning daycare, where we will have to have staff assigned to those schools. If we, once we open our doors, kids are going to come. So we have to decide if, as a district, if that's what we're going to do and open it. Because then, if parents know the door's going to open at 8 o'clock, they're going to drop their students off at 8 o'clock. Right now, we don't open the doors until we are staffed. The last thing we want is to open our doors and have kids, someone get hurt, something happen, and we're responsible for them. So we'll have to put a system in place, and we'll have to see if that's, you know, we have to do it across the district.
Yeah, I know, I understand it's not going to be something easy, but it's something I think that we probably need to do because this happens every year. But that's all I had to add. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything further for anybody?
I just had a question.
Ms. Roderick's?
So, two things. One, I just want to remind folks that our kids are not data points, right? So our numbers, yeah, they're not good. We know that they're not good. And we know that in comparison to similar districts, they're still not good. I get that. But our kids are not data points. So just because we see that, yes, things have dipped, and, you know, I have strong feelings about standardized testing, but that is only measuring one aspect of a kid's development. And so when we're looking at that data, we're not looking at the whole child. And so those things are important, right? Because we need to get our kids academically ready to handle the world. But there's so much other stuff that goes into getting our kids ready that is not reflected in MCAS data. So I just want to make that point. The other point about our third, fourth, and fifth graders, I think those numbers show us that those foundation years are so critical to getting kids ready to learn, right? So we're measuring what, how they can process information, how they can synthesize information, all of those things, once they hit third grade. And so those crucial years, those kids miss out on. And I think when we're looking at those numbers, I know you mentioned it, but I just think we have to highlight the fact that they really miss those foundation pieces, and we've got to go back to, how do we recreate that foundation for them, right? And so what efforts do we put in place to support our third, fourth, fifth, sixth graders moving forward, and then also our incoming K1 and two kids, right?
Could not agree more because those numbers, those children will be with us year after year. So they miss those formative years, and we're going to have to put some systems in place to not only to not only give them access to grade-level curriculum, but they also, we need to also intervene and, and plug in some of those gaps, so.
So, I'm not trying to make it sound like it's, you know, oh, it doesn't matter, because it does matter. Those numbers are important, and they help us make plans on, you know, moving forward, but they're not everything, and that's what I'm just trying to highlight. So, before folks kind of jump down the, like, oh my goodness, our data is really bad, yeah, it is, but that's also not the entire picture.
One indicator.
One indicator. So, with that, I yield.
Anything, Mr. Aguirre?
Just to talk about the, the scores, and Superintendent said that we have a lot of work to do. I would definitely say that is the case, and this is not just because of the pandemic. We've had work to do for ten years where our scores are flat, our achievement levels are flat, and what I'm looking for is what are we gonna do different that's gonna help us? Because we've been doing the same thing here since at least the last ten years that I've been on, and we keep on saying, every year we have the same presentation, oh, we're doing this, we're doing, and I get it that people are working hard, but we're just not doing something that needs to happen in order for these scores to go up and for our percentages to go up. When I read those scores, and we have schools in the bottom ten percent, five percent or below, and I've sat here on this stage, like everybody else, and after millions and millions and millions of dollars in resources that we never had before, keep getting pushed into the schools, and then when the results come out, we're the same. There's just no way around it. That's, that's gotta change, because we can't keep doing the same thing, and everybody gets, you know, raises, everybody gets promoted, and we're not seeing the achievement. At some point, we have to say enough's enough, and we're gonna recognize those that are getting it done, and we're gonna have to make some changes where they, where they need to be, because the scores are beyond flat, in my opinion. And I've been asking for data, last instructional meeting six months ago, to look at our, our own assessments, to see how that matches up. We still don't get it. So, a lot of the stuff that we ask for i- is not necessarily there, so, we talked about it at the goal meeting for the superintendent, we need, this committee needs to see what's happening, because we can't only go by what you tell us and what's in front of us. The attendance pieces, there's really no excuse for that, in my opinion, that we have to figure out what's happening, and we've got the resources in order to do that. So, why we have some schools doing one thing and others doing another is not a good system. If we're doing something right, it has to be across all schools. I've said over and over, and I've said this personally to the superintendent, our attendance officers, in my opinion, should work for the principal, because the principal of the school needs to raise their attendance, and they have to have control over the people that are in their buildings. That's a, that's something that should have happened a long time ago, and I, I think it should happen again, because we shouldn't have one group of schools doing it one way and another group doing it another way. I've asked, meeting after meeting, are we following the, the chain of exactly what's happening across the district? No, we're still not doing that. So, these are all things that need to happen in order for us to create the system to change. But I'm just tired of, okay, we're gonna work on it, we're gonna work on it. You know, the rubber meets the road sometime, and we have to do it. My last comment is on what Mr. Hart was talking about. If any child's getting dropped off at the school, they shouldn't be dropped off until they can come in the building. So, whatever school that is, they, whoever that person is, needs to know. We're not saying that we're gonna leave them outside, but if a parent's dropping off a kid twenty minutes before the school opens, that's not on the principal or the administrators or yourself, Madam Superintendent. So, we gotta figure out where these are coming from, and if they get dropped off early, that's, you know, what are we gonna do? Open up at six o'clock? So, I just can't stress enough that we have certainly plenty of issues going on there, and I'm looking forward to the data coming in. With that, I yield.
Anything further? I, I would, I would like to say one thing on this. Obviously, I've been fortunate enough to be in a number of schools this year. Again, disheartened by the scores, but this conversation went on last year with a number of mayors and the lieutenant governor, that, you know, coming out of a pandemic is extremely challenging for every city in the Commonwealth, and I don't think, you know, other than a select few, anybody's seeing any big jumps in scores. So, again, I don't disagree with Mr. Aguirre or anybody on this committee. We have a lot of work to do, and I'm hoping that, that we can turn this around, because that's one of the things that weighs on me is the scores in our schools, and it just can't keep going like this. That's all I can tell you, Superintendent. But I appreciate your reference. Mr. Aguirre?
Sorry, just had another request. I know I brought this up in the past. So, if we have students that are, however many percentages chronically absent, and I know the law and the law that you can't take its child to court or a family to court, but I'd like data on exactly what's happening with those children that are, that are in that category. Also, with those children, are they, are some of them making progress? Is it just all automatically that they are out, you know, there, I'm sure there's some students that are out that many days that are still making progress, but that's the data that I think we need to look at so we can see what's happening. If they, I've said this over and over, we're not using the tools that we have to to let parents know that this is important. Students need to be taken to court if their behavior is out of line, and if they're absent for too many times with the law. This has to be. It can't be, well, one school says, oh, I don't want to do that, or, oh, we don't discipline kids that way, or whatever it is. It has to be the system. And if we have to debate that and make this motion to go in and manage it like that, I'm ready to do it, because I've been saying that for several years now, and it's, well, some did, some didn't, all this other stuff. The excuses need to stop. If kids out that long, let's file a CRA, let's get them into court with the family, get them the services they need so they can show up to school.
I mean, I think it's more than that, though. Sometimes a student might be chronically absent because they were in the hospital or they were actually legitimately sick. So, we have to disaggregate that data and split it up and make sure that we identify the kids who actually were truant and the kids who were sick and were out for a reason, but were, because excused or non-excused, they all get reported once you reach that threshold. So, you know, I, I think that, you're right, we've made a lot of investments. I truly believe that we are on the right track. We will do what we need to do, but we also need to, to engage our parents and for parents to recognize that kids need to be in school. We're not gonna go get them, they need to come to school so that we can do our job. So, we have to do some communication with that, with our families, to impress upon them the importance of kids being in school. Let them get there so we can do what we need to do once they are there.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think we're saying the same thing. I wouldn't, a student that had a legitimate illness or whatever, you know, excuse, that's fine, but I haven't seen any documents from this administration this year or in the past that says, here's all my students, here's the ones that had, were chronically absent, and here's the ones that were excused, here's the ones that had. That data has never come before us, so that's kind of what I'm looking for. At the same time, I do think that we need to have the debate over who do the attendance officers report to, because right now they're reporting to no one, because we don't have an assistant superintendent, you know, for that department, totally different issue, but we don't have that. So, in lieu of that, they need to work for the principal, in my opinion, and that's an administrative thing, but if we have to put it on the agenda and deal with it, we'll deal with it, but I, who's watching them to make sure that everybody's on the same page? The principal's gonna be responsible for their attendance. At some point, you're gonna bring back the goals, and you're responsible for the attendance. So, it, we need to have a chain of who actually is in charge of what they're doing, what they're not doing, to make sure we have consistency. And right now, nobody is watching that whole division, because we can't hire assistant superintendent. So, I think that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, but can I, can I say something? I, I thought under Edward Reform that a principal was responsible for everyone in the building.
We do, but they share, what Mr. Aguirre is, is alluding to is correct. They share multiple schools, so if I'm an attendance officer, I might be assigned to Doran and Morton, for instance. So, I report, like, I work with those principals, those two principals, and they do, they work with those principals, principals, but ultimately, he's right that they come under the umbrella of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, but that's something that we are looking at, so I, I do think that there's some changes.
But, but my, my question to follow up is if, if I, if I'm a truant officer, and I go into Doran where you were principal, you don't give me a list of students that are on your hot hundred?
Yes, well, there's a team.
Gotta report back to you on what's going on with those kids?
No, they're, they report to, they meet with the principal and the student support team, et cetera, so the, the, if I'm the principal and I'm going over my list and I'm saying, I need you to go do these home visits, or we need to work with this family, et cetera. So, that does happen at the school level, but ultimately, they answer to, their direct supervisor, which is what Mr. Aguirre is alluding to, is, has been the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and in the, a while back, it used to be the answer to the principals, then it was changed, and now it's something I'm looking to look at.
I think it's a difference between working with the schools versus for the schools. And what I'm trying to do is if I'm a principal of a school and I have to, and the attendance officer works for me two days per week, my impression is that person reports to the school and works for that principal. Whatever that principal needs them to do to help get the attendance up is in that school for the entire day. What we have currently is they're working with the principal for a boss who doesn't exist and hasn't existed for two years. That's some of my concern. So, I think that's things that we need to correct as a system, so we get everybody on the same page. Who's the, we talked about the cars, who's driving the cars, who's getting the kids? If you work for the principal, the principal can direct them for eight hours a day, here's what we're gonna do, and I think we'll have a, a better luck.
I don't think that's a bad lift.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Superintendent Ponce, enrollment?
Yes, so our enrollment, just pulled, we pulled the data today. Our current enrollment stands at ten thousand six hundred and thirty-one students district-wide. Durfey High School is a healthy twenty-four sixty-four students, two thousand four hundred and sixty-four, and our kindergarten enrollment is up, it's at eight seventy-three. So, our enrollment right now is in a good place. We're finally getting accurate enrollment data. And finally, we have an update on the fields, the athletic complex at Durfey. The varsity baseball field contract has been signed by the RAD Corporation for the reconstruction of that field. The submittal process is underway, along with the contract to beginning the mobilization process. The excavation equipment will be arriving for the next two weeks, and the anticipated completion date for this project is expected to be middle to late April. We also have the soccer practice, football fields, hockey fields. The artificial turf replacements will begin in March of two thousand twenty-three. Minor grading of drainage materials, the installation of turf will follow with the completion date of mid to late June. So, that will be happening. And then we have the varsity softball field and football stadium. The RFP will be out for bid by November first. The varsity softball field has been a challenge from the start with the discovery of large ledge formation on the northwest side of the intended area adjacent to the old Durfey Auditorium building. The cost of the ledge removal was estimated at five hundred thousand or higher. We sent an area back, we sent the area back to landscape architect for small redesign. The field was moved to further, further north on the plateau, and minor ledge removal would allow the field to be built with all the amenities of the original design. Lost in the design was the area for the track and field events, which will be relocated in the outfield of the JV softball and JV baseball field, which will also be renovated soon. The second half of the RFP will be for a new artificial turf for the football stadium, and this project will be a March start date with an anticipated completion date of mid to late June. And that's all I have.
Any questions on anything else? Mr. Aguirre?
I would just ask the superintendent to report back on the financing of all, of such, so, I know we had had some, I gave my own opinion on how I think we should pay for it, but that isn't important, because we have to complete the project. So, I think the missing link to that report is how we're gonna pay for it to come to fruition.
Funding.
And I do think that we need to, I don't know what's taking so long in the negotiations with the city on how do we get us bonding ability, but maybe that's, we can put that on the agenda for next month, maybe, to talk about where we're at with that, because we're gonna have to pay for these things on our own, in my opinion, and sooner rather than later. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Okay, this time we have the student delegate report. I'd like to turn it over to Mimi Larevy to introduce our new student delegate.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, introduce Samantha here. We're supposed to have two delegates here, but our second delegate will be from RPA. They will be here next, next month. But sitting to the right of me is Samantha Aguirre, forever resident, Durfey High School twelfth grader. She is the president of Student Government in National Honor Society. She former student of Sylvia Elementary and More in Middle School. So, without any further ado, this is Samantha Aguirre.
Hello, guys. So, from the student's perspective, we're also like really big on like the attendance and getting kids involved. So, our main focus in like the student government is doing what the kids want and getting them involved and like actually wanting them to come to school. So, that is our main focus right now. We've been making like TikToks, because like, as like the parents must know, like, all the kids are on TikTok nowadays. So, we found that that's the most effective way that the kids are learning and finding more events out from posting on like their social medias. So, from the student's perspective, we're also looking at attendance, and like I said, getting kids involved. But my main focus as the student body delegate is seeing what the kids want. So, when I go into my student government meeting next week, I'm going to be asking each president to ask their class what the students want, so I can come back next month and talk to you guys about what the kids want, so we can help them change and actually want to be in school, and hopefully that will help with the attendance that you guys want. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, item number seven. We have a series of minutes that need approval.
Motion to approve approval of minutes from seven point one to seven point eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so this is something that bothers me, it doesn't sit well with me, it hasn't sat well with me for a long time. So, I think an explanation is needed, because what's happening is, we are going to, we received a notice from the Attorney General dated October seventh, after Attorney Assad recommended some things on, we had some late minutes. So, we thought this was, was done. The conclusion reads, "We find that the committee violated the open meeting law by failing to timely approve meeting minutes. We find that the committee's failure to timely approve minutes was intentional. We order immediate and future compliance with the law's requirements, and we caution that similar future violations could be considered evidence of intent to violate the law. Future intentional violations or failure to timely approve meeting minutes may result in a recommendation of a civil penalty." And that civil penalty is gonna come to this committee. That is major, major concern for me, because I don't know how this happens, that we now have eighteen sets of minutes here today. Eighteen sets of minutes, it's inexcusable how this even happened, but we've been given responses, I think, to the Attorney General that aren't really accurate, because the ones that I read from Attorney Assad make it look like as if everything's all set, we've got it done, this and that. I, I just don't know. I'd like to hear from somebody as far as, how is this even possible, that we're sitting here today with eighteen sets of minutes, knowing that we just got hit, saying it was an intentional violation of the law? And anything in the future, you're gonna get a civil penalty. So, on October, whatever the date is, we're gonna submit eighteen more? We're gonna get a civil penalty, and it's unacceptable.
Superintendent Ponce?
So, certainly, I can respond to that. We, I did read that letter, certainly right after that, I, we did meet, we went over all the outstanding minutes and put systems in place so that it doesn't happen again. As I shared with all of you, we have a system in place where, and we also, we have had many more meetings than we typically do, but we have put a system in place so that we are not getting fined, and we are, we are in compliance. We have no intention of not being in compliance moving forward.
Anything further on minutes? Devin, please call the, um...
Yeah, just a comment.
Mr. Aguirre?
So, well, I can accept the idea that we gotta do better. At some point, the rubber meets the road, and we're approving minutes today from March ninth. If anybody on this committee's not embarrassed, shame on you, because we shouldn't be having this discussion right now, March ninth, March sixteen. There's only one set of these eighteen min, eighteen sets of minutes that are actually within the thirty-day window. So, I get it. I'm not looking to, I just don't like the answer, because I think I've already been told answers before that this was all set. We have been, we're telling the attorney to send letters up that are in error. So, now, he's going on the information we're giving him, now, he's gonna look like a dummy sending these things up now, because what's his response to this? Yes, you're right, you told us if you do it again, you're going to get, we're gonna get fined, and by the way, now we have eighteen. We have seventeen more that are in violation. I just don't think that sometimes things happen, mistakes happen or whatever, but there's certainly breakdown in systems of what people are doing, what the systems are doing, full-time people that work all day to figure out, like, what are we gonna do here? And I, I just don't, I can accept the superintendent saying it isn't gonna happen again, but I've And I, I just don't, I can accept the superintendent saying it isn't gonna happen again, but I've heard that before, and I'm telling you, this is an embarrassment to me personally and this school committee, and when we get fined, it's gonna come civilly to this committee. I yield.
Ms. Laravee?
Just to, to respond quickly, but like Superintendent just said, and this mostly to you, Kevin, cause I disagree with you a little bit. I mean, the superintendent's trying to put, you know, the systems in place. We've never had as many subcommittee meetings that we've had this past year, okay? So putting the systems in place, we have one person taking care of all this. Yes, full-time, but she's also taking care of a lot of other situations, okay? She takes care of all communications with us. She's setting up more and more subcommittee meetings. She is setting up these meetings, she's now back to making binders. There's a lot of responsibility on this one person. I wanna take the superintendent's, she says systems are in place and this isn't gonna happen again, let's move forward. Is this, do we ask, does this one full-time person need maybe a part-time person to help with some of the responsibilities on, on their plate? I mean, the open law complaints, the, the minute, all of it, it's a lot of work, especially with the systems that we are asking the superintendent to put in place, and that's more and more subcommittees, meetings. So, I mean, I'll accept the answer and hope, I mean, are we all caught up right now?
Yes.
Madam Superintendent?
And that's why you have 18 sets of minutes in front of you, because when we got that letter, we sat down, looked at all the outstanding minutes, and I wanted to make sure that moving forward after this meeting, we would not be, be behind. So ultimately, that person answers to me. So if anybody's gonna be embarrassed, it should be our system. I'm telling you, moving forward, we will not be late with minutes. So I'll take that responsibility, but I'm telling you that we will be caught up moving forward.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, just real quickly, I just agree with, I get, agree with Ms. Laravee, but Madam Superintendent, is there a way somebody else can help in that, in that particular office?
Right, I think that when-
And add, even adding a part-time person?
I think that when we, we, part of our system is when we have multiple meetings in one week in order to get them done efficiently and on time, we're going to have to have someone help out.
Okay, that's all, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so I disagree with both Ms. Laravee and Mr. Hart. So when you look at these minutes, I don't work every day in there. How long does a, a set of minutes take? Who actually did all of these minutes? So like, my question to you today, Madam Superintendent via email, was who actually did all of these minutes? So we can see, because that's how you do a check and a balance. You can see when somebody started a minutes and how long they take. For a meeting to happen in March, and we have to get them done within 30 days, but we don't have them done in 180 days, I'm not so sure what kind of message we're sending to people in the school department, that this is okay. We wouldn't accept this when it's a principal or somebody else. We're trying to get whole people accountable, and we got 17 sets of minutes that aren't done on time, and the answer is, we're gonna do, I get it, we're gonna do better. But how the heck did we get here? And what happened because of this? We're talking about meetings in March, we're not talking about outside of a window of one week. And when we look at the letter that was October 7th, I'd like to get every copy of every one of the letters that Attorney Assad responded, it's from the entire 2022, because it's gonna say, three months ago, four months ago, that if we, a system's in place, I have it in my head, a system's in place, if we're getting behind, this was three months ago now, that it says we will have other people do it, which shouldn't be. Nobody else should need to do it, but we've, we said that to them three months ago, and now we're still doing minutes from now? If this doesn't tell you that there's a, there's something else wrong, and poo-pooing it to me is just not, not okay. The answer that we're gonna do better is, is okay, but it's not gonna address how the hell did we get here? And that's the problem that I have with it, and I disagree with anybody else on this committee that doesn't think that this is a problem. And we will get a complaint, and we will get fined by the Attorney General, and it's, there's really no reason for it, so I yield.
Anything for, Ms. Laravee?
Yeah, I just wanna respond to that. I didn't say, I didn't think it was an issue, it is an issue. But I am gonna take the superintendent's word for it, that it is being addressed, and we're gonna move forward. It absolutely is an issue. I yield.
Okay, let's call the roll. Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Shell. Are you muted?
You're muted, Shell, we can't hear you.
Scott's coming in.
Give us a thumbs up if you say yes.
Thumbs up, yes. Okay, thank, thank you, Kevin.
Ms. Rogers?
No.
Mayor Cogan?
Approval of travel requests, we have a number of travel requests tonight.
Motion to approve?
Do I, do I have a second on travel?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion on the travel? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up, yep.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Next item up is acceptance of donations. Can I get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
And a second on the donations?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, can we call the roll, then? Ms. Ponce, can you explain them to us?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Hold on, she disappeared.
Can you just show us a picture there, Al, so she can give us a thumbs up, please? Thumbs up, okay, yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Cogan?
Yes. Ms. Ponce, please?
So on behalf, from Whirlpool to Henry Lord Community School, on behalf of Principal Bronhard, $10,000. From Whole Foods to Letourneau Elementary School, on behalf of Principal Sipson, $3,000 donation. And from Stonehill Alumni to Henry Lord Community School, on behalf of Dr. Bronhard, backpacks with school supplies. Thank you to all.
Item number 10, approval of contracts. We have a number of contracts here. Can I get a, a motion and a second, unless someone has some specifics, as we always do?
Motion to- All of the facilities?
I have a motion, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion, a second now. Mr. Aguirre, you would, which one, please?
All of the facilities ones?
All of the facilities ones at the tops, that's 1, 2, 3, 4.
And train.
And which one, I'm sorry?
Train and Teach for America.
Train and Teach for America. So excluding facilities, Teach for America and Train, could you, any discussion on the others? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up, okay.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Cogan?
Yes, okay. And facilities first one, citywide glass, Mr. Aguirre?
I just would like to have Mr. Pacico just explain to some, some of what these are. It's the first time I'm hearing about some of them.
They said there was a memo, and he's one that you asked for before in your packet, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, there's around 85 pages that I believe Mr. Pacico put in for change orders and the like, but I think he could summarize it, is it probably a little better?
Sure. So first will be the glass, citywide glass, so the design of Durfee, the design of Durfee is kind of an open bathroom concept, so it's movie theater for lack of a better explanation. The problem with that is that it doesn't allow us, as we opened and ran the building for a year, it doesn't allow us much control, it also doesn't allow us the ability to shut a bathroom down if there's an emergency, or if there's something else going on in that particular area. So we started looking at changing that design to a, a glass, a glass storefront, and installing those glass storefronts in the bathrooms, which would, would be twofold, obviously, we would be able to lock bathrooms down, but we wouldn't lose the, the idea of the open concept of the, of the bathroom. It doesn't restrict any of the airflow, but it does allow us to lock those bathrooms down. So we did 12, 12 setups, we will be doing hopefully another 12. It is working in the building, it is doing exactly what we need it to do, and when we need to shut a building, shut a bathroom down for repair, for anything whatsoever, we can do that. Again, the design is not a concept that we came up with, but it was the concept that seems to be a trend in high schools. Not so much in middle schools or elementaries, but in high schools. So we went with that trend during design, and it's just not working for us.
Yeah, Mayor, I totally agree with what you're saying. I had that at the school I worked at, and it was the dumbest design I've ever seen, that you can't lock a bathroom, you can't control what's happening. So when you, you say glass, it's obviously gonna be protected, it's not, so it's glass doors that you can actually lock them, nobody can go in or out.
No, so once the door is locked, it's, it's, on the inside, obviously, because of, you know, fire laws and things, fire codes and stuff, the inside is, is non, they can't lock it. The outside is locked.
And you mean, right on the, on the-
So basically, when you-
On the hallway, right? When you look on the hallway?
Yeah, when you're looking in the bathroom, we're not closing off the entire two bathrooms and two single-stall bathrooms. What we're doing is locking the individual bathrooms. So a boy's room can stay open while a girl's room is locked, and vice versa. The other bathrooms are still accessible. So it's individual doors in these, in these stalls.
Oh, see, I thought you meant, so when I'm looking down the hallway, you shouldn't be able to, there should be a way that the administration can actually not know that nobody's walking in or out of that. So I think the door should be on the outside, so that we shut the whole thing down.
Well, as, as we leave for executive session, the bathrooms around the corner here are done, and basically what, it allows us to control of what bathroom we want to open. The other way, we closed the entire four bathrooms, the two full gang bathrooms and then the two single stalls. That was, in our opinion, and there were a few people who were in this conversation, that was an overkill of what we were trying to do, because the chances of, of an entire bathroom being closed down for any kind of repair is gonna be slim to none. However, there could be an opportunity for one bathroom to be down. And it, and it may be for general maintenance, it may be for an emergency call, it may be just because we're having activity in that bathroom that we don't want to have.
Yeah, and the funding of this is gonna come out of the Durfee project?
No.
It's not eligible?
The, the school, what we're trying to do is liquidate, as you know, what we're trying to do is liquidate the project to fund other projects, which is the, the fields, and finish that up. So the residual funds that are left in the project, we're using on, on the, the field projects. So this is being funded through facilities and operations.
It seems like this is a Durfee, for lack of a better word, a screw-up in the design, whoever thought this was a good design. So I think it makes more sense to take these type of things out of that, and, and obviously we can't get money twice, and then we gotta figure out how we're gonna spend the money on the fields, you know, later on. I just think it's, it's $50,000, and, but definitely, it doesn't make sense how they designed it. So I'm gonna support this, but I, I also think we need to look at all of the funding and-
Sure.
Put it out where it came from. With that, I yield.
Any further discussion on that one? Kevin, do you wanna run through?
Motion to approve?
You want me to go through each one?
Individually, or you wanna go through the whole group?
No, I'm gonna ask the same basic questions, so that we just get the explanation.
So you wanna run through them all for him?
Sure, sure. So the, the second one is the Henry Lord Drainage Improvements. There's $83,000 of, of additional costs. Some of the costs were, they were unforeseen, and some of the costs were add-on. The add-on ones were on the Henry Lord Project, rubbing and cleaning the entire area around Mariano Bishop Boulevard, so we wouldn't have a corner that people could get hurt leaving the, the site. There was a lot of trees, brush, all the way down the side of the road that we took out. We grubbed out the culvert to be sure that the drainage wouldn't be an issue over there. We, part of the project was a retention pond on the opposite side in the wetlands, that was expanded, because the flow that we created on one side was gonna be an additional flow on the opposite side. We also had some unforeseen issues on the soil, the compaction, we've had to bring in more soil than we thought we needed to, that's also in here. And then the configuration of the curbing, we changed to capture another four to five parking places over design. So those are your changes on the Henry Lord Project.
So that already, that, sounds like that already happened?
That's finished, yes.
Yeah, so that's-
The, the issue was, is we were, we were, as we were coming back to the project, we had some credits, and we were trying to maximize those credits in all of these spots, and this is as close as I could get to the, to the final number.
Yeah, just that this already exists. I thought it was like a, a new part of the project.
It's not, it's the same project, the same project.
They did the work, they gotta get paid.
Trying to finish, it could have been, to be totally honest, all the things that I did could have been made a separate project, but they wouldn't be for this number. They would have been much more for another mobilization.
I understand, thank you.
The, the next item, similar at Talbot, so we had some ledge issues that we ran into, and that created a problem for us in the drainage, getting drainage from the east, from the west to the east side of the building to, to hit the, to hit the drainage going into the northward Tupper, southward Tupper, I'm sorry. We also have fire hydrants, we had three fire hydrants on the property that weren't functional, so we replaced the piping and the fire hydrants to be sure that we had coverage throughout the, the back of the parking lot. And there were some added drainage, I think we added drainage, about 45 feet worth of drainage to get it further away from the building. So we create, we've stopped the flooding in that parking lot, and hopefully the asphalt will last a little longer than the last one did.
When they approve their projects, is there a contingency in there, like, or is that part of the problem?
The contingencies were very small, the project came in higher than we thought, so the contingencies got eaten up almost from the get-go. And as I said, on the, on the Henry Lord Project, more than the, than the Talbot, I didn't have the, as much contingency, because the project was valued much less.
Yeah, I just think in the future, it might be better to just come ahead of time and say we need more contingency or something, so that we're not doing it after the fact. Just my own personal opinion.
Anything further?
The next item, Miller, Miller Building.
Is there anything else you'd want?
Building, Miller, Miller Building Systems?
Yeah, the, the Miller Building is basically on the field, that's going on the, on the stadium, and that is to put all the track and field mats. We don't have a building big enough, that stuff used to stay outside. It's gonna be going into this building, along with other matting and large items that we normally would just cover on the field. So this is a building setup, 20 by 40, just for track and field and large items.
Is that out there now, Kenny?
It is not.
It's not?
And would this alleviate some of the storage problems in the snack shack area and that?
Exactly. There'll be nothing in there, right? Everything will be in these buildings moving forward, and all of the new construction, all of them have buildings, storage buildings built in to the project.
Anything further on?
Kenny, on that building, where, it's gonna be located near the shack?
It's in back of the ticket booth, near the old clock tower.
Oh, okay.
Right in back of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on the four, um, facilities?
My only question on train was if we could possibly get it, either a one-page or something explaining why we're going certain ways, like, I see train, I see E and E, I see things like we're using proprietary here, not there, and I'm totally confused.
I can, I can tell you, and I can give it to you in, in a memo, but the, the issue is, is Sylvia, Spencer, Borden, and Green are all trained schools. So unless I can totally change everything in the building, we're gonna do some work with the BMS, the building maintenance, the building maintenance systems, and we're gonna do some work on chillers, but if, unless I change every piece of equipment in those buildings, train is a proprietary. So in those buildings, when they were built, train was the low bidder, and train systems are in there. So I have to go back with train, and I'll have three, three schools that will stay under the train systems. So that's the only reason.
You can get a summary of what that is. I'd certainly appreciate it. And Madam Superintendent, my last one was Teach for America. Just, I think it's the wrong year, but how many people do we have currently? And it says forty thousand dollars. I'm assuming that's basically just consulting fee? That's not actually paying people, right?
Right, that's not paying salaries, but they, their coaching comes as part of that, but that's part of our partnership with Teach for America. We have, Henry Lord probably is the biggest school that has the most Teach for America candidates.
Yes, that's correct. There's a fee per participant from Teach for America. They're typically a two-year commitment on the part of the participant. And what happens is after the two years, they relocate to here. Most of them are not from this area. And we have retained some over the years, but we currently have three alumni with us. But it's always, it's been a good partnership. And that four thousand dollars per person that we pay them goes to their support that they put in, the training upfront, the support during their time here in the first and second year. And then at the end of that, we decide whether we're, they decide whether they're staying with us or not.
So we have ten, is that what you're saying?
We currently have ten.
That's where you get the forty thousand. And it said twenty twenty-two, but I'm assuming that just means current year.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
I think the date's wrong on the agenda, but I was just curious how many people that is? If it's one, two, whatever.
And they typically cluster them at schools so that their support can go to one building and provide adequate support at those buildings.
Sounds good, thank you. Motion approved.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll on the other six items.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item eleven, approval of grants. We have a number of grants again. If anybody had any they want to take out. Can I get a motion and a second on the grants?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the grants?
Can we put Title One and Early College?
So we got two that, for discussion, Title One and Early College. Deb, could you call the roll on the others, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion on Title One, Mr. Agia.
So as, I've asked this for the last several years to see where the actual funds are being spent. And I didn't go through the whole package that we have here. But when you look at the big budget, which is now in cost centers, I'm hoping that it's identified as which one is Title One and which ones are not. Because in the past, what it, what it's been is more identified. For the last four or five years, under the previous administration, it was sort of like, we're going to, we're going to pay where we, where we have to and things like that. So I'm just looking to drill down the Title One budget and which positions we're actually funding ahead of time so that it's not at the end and we say, oh, we're going to take some of these and some of those. So I'm not looking for that answer now, but that would be something I'm asking for.
We'll put a memo together.
And the Early College question I had is, we just approved, I think, a position to help with the expansion? Can that position be paid for out of this grant?
Mr. Woodward?
Good evening. Yes, we have one position that we can fund through this grant of the recently approved Early College Expansion.
So it's paid for from this grant, not the budget?
It can be. We, we, we put it in, in the springtime before the budget was fully approved. So our thought was either, now that, once the budget was approved, to either convert it or fully fund one of the positions.
So we have a fifty thousand dollar savings in the budget?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole. Item twelve point one is a vote to approve the selection and appointment of Laura Collins, nurse for the Faroe Public Schools, as presented by Karen Long.
Zoom.
I have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on a new nurse? Hearing none, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up.
Kind of thumbs up. Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve point two is a discussion and an update on Power School as presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer. Are they coming in, Mr. Cabral?
Yes, John Paul is here. He's the Regional Vice President and we're going to have Alex turn on the Zoom. He has a bunch of his team members that'll be present tonight. While Alex is doing that, I'm just going to give you a brief update. We are moving forward. You know, I've been up here for the last year, being as very transparent and truthful as we can with you. This has not been an easy project. This has not been an easy road. As soon as we check off one issue, concern, we bring up others. And up until that point, central administration, we felt that some of the communication may not have been there with Power School. We were a little lost. The last three weeks, we've had many meetings with Power School, John Paul's team, our project managers have been excellent. There have been some things that we didn't know how to ask. It's a new, you know, a new program for us. We didn't know that we could ask for strategic support while we were in the implementation process. So when we met a couple of weeks ago, we had some demands and some major concerns. How do we maintain accuracy with our data? We're bringing over twenty years of data. How do we maintain that accuracy with attendance and enrollment? If you look in one window, the numbers look a little bit different than they do in another window. We didn't realize that we could ask for this type of support. We were asking for support, sending some emails and they get lost in translation. After a series of those meetings, John Paul and his team, we've been working since Thursday. I've been getting emails all weekend. So we're moving in the right direction with some of those concerns. We have some other concerns in the special programs piece. Kristin Faris has been amazing on that side, on the district side. We're working through those hiccups. Kristin identifies an issue. We're working through them. Some of them not easy fix. Some of them take some time. It actually has taken Power School some time to look at them. But we're moving in the right direction. Quite a few concerns in the nursing side, in the nursing module. Again, we didn't know that we could have strategic support for some of those issues. Strategic support tickets have been opened and we're now starting the dialogue and stuff is being corrected, where can be corrected. There are some pieces in the nursing side that are still not going to work, like internally Karen's team would like. That's something that now we have a wish list and then once we can get through all of our internal hiccups and technical hiccups, it's something that we can look at a central office team and see if we want to customize pieces. But again, we've said from the beginning, we don't want to be doing much customizing right now. We've bought the standard base model and we're adding as we go because we don't want to get ourselves into where we were with X two, where twenty years of customizations kind of backed us into a corner and we couldn't do things during COVID when we had key staff members out sick and people that just didn't know the system. We didn't have those capacities within to work us through that. So by doing this with Power School and starting with the base model and working in these extra pieces, we're confident that we'll have those capacities within. Multiple people in the district will know how to do these things so we never get to where we were before Power School. Another huge issue for us, and we heard about it tonight, were parent access. The problem with parent access, which we didn't know, and after having a conversation last week with parent square, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Power School, is they have some best practices. We're a ten thousand plus student district, so fourteen thousand parents on record that want to know what's going on. The district has to create an individualized code for each parent to be able to log into Power School. So right there, we're still on the parent square side, trying to gain email addresses and contact information. And when the two systems don't connect with the information that we need, we can't get those codes out there. I can tell you, as of four o'clock this afternoon, the SIMS team internally was able to produce those codes. And we are working with Power School. Matter of fact, John Paul, on his ride down here, was in an email chain. They have sent us some information. We're anticipating that by Thursday afternoon, those codes will be out district-wide to the twelve thousand plus parents. And then they just simply sign in and they'll be able to use the app. They'll be able to use the website. They'll be able to see student grades and such moving forward. This piece has been the biggest lift because of the way the information was coming over from Aspen in order to make sure that everything matched up correctly so students were getting that and, you know, students and parents were seeing that information. But again, something that we didn't know, we had strategic support. John Paul got his team involved. I guess for us, a learning moment was maybe I wasn't asking the right questions. But now that we've had these meetings, we have some, we have a new customer support manager that's basically going to be with us now through the long haul. And we've been assured by Power School that we also have the support of Danny Davis, who is our sales rep. We have the support of John Paul and his team. So as we move forward, if there are issues, it's going to be a little bit easier for us to digest and to resolve in a more timely manner. Two of the pieces that we are realizing, we're not in our original scope of work. When you think student information system, you think a student's data is going to follow from one system to another. But attendance and historical enrollments were not part of the original scope of work. So basically, they show you how to do it and that is now on us internally to do it. That's been basically put on hold at this point because in order to get a student information system working for attendance, for grading, for state reporting, that's been put on hold. That information has been pulled out internally by us from X two and we are going to begin the process to upload all that information. So again, like I've been saying for over a year now, we're getting there. We start to see the finish line a bit and then we come back a little bit because we've created another issue. I've had members of the committee reach out to me on the weekends. We've had some issues here and there. I just need to hear about those issues. And I'll give you a great example. Some of our buildings have been excellent to work with. Principal Damaris saw something on Power School that said tardy kiosk and he said, I would really love to be able to use this. Well, we're not ready on that piece with Power School yet, but we asked some questions this afternoon and John Paul and his team got involved yet again. And we're going to actually be able to roll that out a lot sooner than we thought we were going to be able to. So these are the pieces where the buildings have to be able to send us the information so we can work together to make this work like we want it as a district. I have John Paul here and his team. I don't know if there are any questions that you have of them while they're here.
Anybody have any questions about the update? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so I want to thank the folks from Power School for coming down. I've been very critical over the last six months based on, we were, when we were presented some information in order for us to decide to turn over and change from Aspen to Power School, it wasn't an easy decision. We had basically, we approved almost a four hundred percent increase in price when we went from what we had to now Power School. So we're now spending a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, by my recollection, for a system. Now, when I made the motion, I made the vote back in the spring, I was using what the folks from Power School, I'm not sure if it's you, sir, or the people on the line, came before us and said, you had converted systems. We're going to make sure everything works great. We're going to have dedicated people just for Faroe River and this is going to be seamless and we'll be ready to rock and roll right away. That's how I took the discussion from you or your company. I haven't seen that yet. And even to this day, it's in the middle of October. We've been at school for six weeks and I'm hearing today that there's systems that you all have that we don't even know about or didn't know about, whoever's fault that was. From this committee member's perspective, we shouldn't have been having these discussions over and over. So I don't think that you delivered what you all said you were going to deliver. But I wanted to have you here to ask you questions relative to, is it something that we did? Is it, am I totally off base? Did you go back and look at it and say, well, maybe we shouldn't have said this or that? But I'm giving you an opportunity to make your company look like you were responsive because quite frankly, I don't think you were responsive like you were in the video that Mr. Cabral said he sent to you, where you said we were going to have everything worked out. So I don't know if who wants to respond from your company, but I certainly would like to hear it.
Yeah, I can certainly start with some thoughts. We do have a lot of the folks involved in your implementation on the Zoom meeting, so they can certainly layer in with any additional detail they think might be helpful. They are certainly closer to those details than I am. I think Scott really summarized it pretty well. An implementation of a new system is a massive project. There is always a plan that gets put together at the outset of that and I think we had a good plan. I think when you get into the reality of the project, it's sort of like getting under the hood of a car. You don't know what's under there until you get under there. And I think that certainly it presented some challenges along the way in terms of data migration. When you move from one student information system to another, it's going to expose any fundamental issues you have with the data that you had today. And as you go through the process, I think you put it really well. You don't know what you don't know. You're moving from something that was very familiar to something that is unknown. So no matter how much due diligence you do upfront going into the process, you're going to discover things like the capabilities you mentioned that you can move forward and implement with. So I don't know if any of the folks on the line want to chime in in terms of their experience with the project. I do think that we had a plan, that we followed that plan, that our team was dedicated to Fall River to help them out. And I do want to ensure everyone on, on the committee that you have our pledge to make sure that we help you get through the rest of the initial steps, get through a successful first year on Power School. So Joe, Ray, Bob, anything you'd add? If you can hear us?
I can't hear.
This is, this is Bob JP and, you know, I think you summarized it well. Certainly, there are some things that came up during the implementation where we had to pivot a little bit. I think we worked together with Fall River team to, to address those. But, you know, I feel like we're, we're close to resolving all those and we'll continue to provide whatever additional resources and time needed to make sure this is done.
And I'm just going to, I'm just going to step in on the district side. We're getting to the point now in the project where we've talked at the central office level that this will be where now we start to have some internal focus groups, right? Because people are using the product and we've said, Maria and I have said from the get-go, we are not customizing anything at this point. But there may be things that Karen and her team really would like to see there. There may be things that Kristin and her team would really like to see there. There may be things that principals would like to see for reporting. That's something now where we're not just going to say, hey, we're going to do it. We're going to sit down, we're going to digest it, we're going to discuss it. And moving forward, if it's something that we do want to change the bones in the background of Power School to do, that's going to be a consensus type vote. It's not just going to be how we did it in the past with X two where we just did it. We're not going to do that anymore. We're in the business to make Power School hopefully last twenty years of twenty years of consistent data, consistent workflow and that relationship with the vendor that we didn't necessarily have with X two in the past.
So when you, when you say like, I think it was mentioned by somebody that you worked with hundreds of systems, you've converted hundreds of systems or something along those lines in, in the video when you first came?
I believe that that was me because one of the things I regularly tell customers that is sysimplementation is not easy, it's hard work. But we have, and I think the sentence, because I've said it about a million times, successfully migrated hundreds of customers from dozens of different student information systems.
Which systems have you, in Massachusetts, have you worked on converting that are larger than Faroe?
Springfield Public Schools.
And they, so any others?
Lawrence.
Couldn't hear you.
Lawrence Public Schools, probably a couple others. I had to look back and look, but those are the two that leap to mind.
So one of the questions I have is when, Mr. Cabral's saying that now we, we learned the best practices that you have or things like that. Along the way through this process, I've heard things that just blow my mind as far as if you've converted systems that are larger than Faroe, even smaller. I guess there's no, there was no online conduct referrals from teachers or something along those lines, that we had to make some sort of corrections? that we had to make some sort of corrections? So that's not just an automatic in a system of Power School?
So the conduct workflow that we had in X2 was a customization. So if you look at a lot of the other systems out there, it doesn't necessarily play that way. So there are conduct pieces in Power School, but again, we've bought that base model, right? So now we're at the point, once the data is in there, to create these workflows, that's where we have to now sit as a district. We have to talk about some of these pieces because, yes, there were pieces in the initial implementation that we thought were there. They weren't. However, we're working through those hiccups now. So you're familiar with X2. We were all familiar with X2. A lot of what was in the FRPS X2 was all customized.
I understand, Mr. Cabral, but the question I asked of the Power School folks was, in 2023, 2022, you're going to tell me that Power School doesn't have an online disciplined module across any of your systems before?
No, we do. We have the ability to submit teacher referrals in a couple of ways. Typically, in Massachusetts, the way that you would want to do that is through a tool we call incident management. Within Power Teacher Pro, there is a teacher referral capability. If you want to make a referral that goes to the office, you check a box that says escalate, and then that referral is emailed automatically to the building administrators.
So what is that? Mr. Cabral keeps saying the base model.
No, so just what I mean is what our staff are used to are customizations from X2. It looks different, and it's different verbiage, and it's not conduct referral. It's in Power Teacher, and those were the trainings that were offered via video, via PDF before the school year started. They're ongoing. They have been all summer. So I think pieces of this are just miscommunication slash not necessarily, they're looking for what they had in X2 as opposed to what we have now. And that's an ongoing piece with Brian and his team is to create these trainings and to create these one sheets, and now we're using Power School. They're involved, and they've started to help us with that piece with the strategic technical support. That's where we are now. So, and I think even for me, like I'm looking in Power School now. I was very versed in X2, and there are pieces, and I'm like, well, that's not where it should be. It's there. It's just in a different spot, and it's called something else.
So what are we going to do? We're going to use the one that comes with the system?
Correct. And they have been. The buildings have been.
So no, it's not a matter of being a base model?
No, so I guess Power School comes with all the pieces in it, right? And if there are additional pieces that we want to change, so like in Power Teacher Pro, if there's something in the incident referral system that needs to be changed, that then becomes a customization, but we're using the base model right now. Maria and the central office team, we have, that's where we have told the line. We're using the base, what's under the hood right now because we don't want to do any customizations because John Paul and his team will tell you as soon as we customize, they're not necessarily responsible for how the system reacts or maintains the data at that point. They won't do it. Power School also does something where it's all plugin-based. So there are third-party applications out there that you can put plugins in, but a majority of those are not necessarily approved by Power School. They have a list of if you use this one, and there's a mistake, we can help you. But if you use that one, we may not be able to help you. So what we're trying to do internally right now is not create any of those major issues and use what we've purchased right now, get used to using what we've purchased, and then again, look at the bigger picture as we move forward. And if they believe it's in our best interest to change something, we will, but that'll be discussed internally before we make a major change so that we're not back to square one with X2.
So I guess live IEPs are not part of the base model for Power School?
No, that's included in what you have, yes.
I couldn't hear you, sir.
Yes, that's included in what you have in the special programs product.
Okay, so why did it cost us $30,000 to implement that?
It was to import additional data.
So former administration wanted to import more data than was discussed initially in the original scope of work. So in order to do that, there was the lift for data. But as far as the live IEP, the original scope of work stated 18 to 24 months of live IEP data, and that's the piece that Kristen and her team have been working tirelessly on because in order to get things to match up. And we're close. We're close. We're getting there. Every day we get closer, but the original scope of work was for 18 to 24 months of live IEP, and then the former administrator in charge of that area wanted more, and that's when we decided to do PDF versions of anything historical from that point on because it was going to be way too big of a lift to get all that information into that system.
So when we paid $30,000 to Power School, that was for what? I still don't understand now.
That was for the migration of additional years of historical data.
So how many came with the package? How much data were you going to take for free as part of our package? None?
As the original scope of work, we had two years of IEP data, live IEP data. Anything else after that would have been historical PDFs.
And what do we have now?
Right now, we have two years of data in there, live IEP data, and we have the historical PDFs coming in.
But why did we pay $30,000 then? If he's saying it was free.
Because the-
He's saying it was free, and we paid $30,000.
The two years was part of the contract. Anything else other than that, when we decided as a district to bring in the rest as PDFs, that all had to be, the data had to be manipulated, it had to be matched up so that those PDFs could get into the system. That has been the biggest lift.
So Power School and Lawrence Springfield, they chose not to have IEPs in their system?
Power, both of those districts don't choose to use our IEP solution. They use something else. But anything we do in general is defined right up front to Scott's point in the statement of work. It spells out exactly what we're going to do, exactly what the district is responsible for doing, and what the milestones are that we mutually agree upon need to be checked off in order for the project to be considered successfully closed. If something is outside of the scope of that, to Scott's point, whether it's a customer request that we thought we wanted two years of data, but we really want five now, then we either develop an additional scope for that additional work, or we have a change-order process for modifying the scope that was agreed upon in the first place.
Yeah, I just took you all at your word when you said to us in order for us to pay four times as much money as we were paying was that everything that we had was going to come over smooth and everything. I took that to mean our data was going to come from the old system into this system without additional funds. So we can go back and forth all we want. I think we got the short end of that. We were promised that everything was going to be included, and then we paid $30,000. My concern is that we're going to pay more in the future. We're going to continue to keep paying more because that's what, and my gut tells me that this is what's going to happen. Are you prepared to tell us that we're not going to get charged another dime for anything that's going on with this full conversion?
That's a very difficult thing to commit to because I can't predict what kind of requests you're going to make and what impact that would have on our services team.
Well, if we don't ask for anything other than what you sold us on, we shouldn't have to pay any more.
If we have no further changes in scope, then yes, you shouldn't have to pay a penny more.
I just think that I for one, it just keeps on coming, more money, more money, more money, and I'm not so sure it's working out as well. The only other question I have is Mr. Cabral mentioned something about consultants, like third parties. Have we used any third-party people on anything related to Power School?
Yes, so we do have, one of the trainers that came in from Power School is a consultant on the side, and we used her team to do some of the data exports that we had brought out of X2 for our clever upload for the beginning of the school year because we just did not have the capacity within the SIMS team to complete that. We have four members in there, and they've been going 12, 13-hour days. So in order to get that piece done, they did use a consultant for that at very short money. It was a couple of thousand dollars, I believe, for that person to run the rapport.
And they paid or we paid?
We paid for that because that was something that we needed to bring in contracted per diem support to help the SIMS team.
So we didn't have Clever last year under Aspen?
Say that, I'm sorry.
We didn't have Clever. You said it was-
No, so we did, but again, X2 spoke to Clever differently, and when the data came in, we're getting to the point now where we're understanding the data flow and the workflows associated with it. So we're able to clean up these processes now internally, but it was different for all the members of the SIMS team, and that information that was coming out of X2 came out a little bit differently for Power School. In order to be able to talk to these things, our next big piece is going to be running a nightly export from Power School into NutriKids. Right now, I'm doing that manually daily. That'll be our next thing.
It just points to the same thing, and you know my point. I think we sold the bill of goods that, you know, we just keep on paying for. So I'm going to end my question on that. All I can tell you is that I will not spend one more dime for Power School for this conversion, period. I don't care what you tell me about it. I'm not voting for it, no matter what. Would that are you?
Anything further?
If I can just clarify for a minute, though.
Superintendent Ponce.
Mr. Aguirre, the part of our issue where people are used to Aspen as it is 20 years later. When we first purchased Aspen, it didn't look like the Aspen that we have now. There were a lot of customizations, a lot of add-ons that we added to create the product that we became familiar with. And what we're saying is we don't want to go down that road yet because we want to see what the product looks like, how it functions first, before we start tweaking and adding and customizing. Because once we start doing that, I don't want to go down a road where we're going to create a product that we don't recognize anymore either. So we're talking about a 20-year conversion, something that got to where we wanted it to be, comparing it to a model that we were starting from scratch, year one. Year one to year 20, there should be a difference, and we're used to it. I myself, I was used to Aspen, absolutely. It's going to take time to change, but all those customizations that we made with Aspen, we paid for also in addition to what we paid. I just want, you know, like, I'm not going to, I'm just saying, we're just looking. We bought the product. We have to test out the product before we start changing it, and we have to, we, there were things that we wanted it for. We want to make sure that it delivers and that it's a more efficient system for all of us. But I think that if we're going to customize in the future, we might say, hey, we want to, we think that this customization will work, will make this report more for discipline. For instance, if we look through it and say, you know, with buying, customizing this report, it's going to be more efficient for us, that may come down the line. But right now, we want to see what it does as it is before we start tweaking and changing it and adding on and going through all that stuff.
And we had the parent, just as an example. We're seven weeks in, and we still don't have the parent stuff up.
Yep.
That's not acceptable. I don't understand. I get the reasons, all that stuff. As far as I'm concerned, those are excuses. The fact of the matter is, is that we were told back in May and June that this was going to be up and running. One of the better systems was going to be for parents to see so that the parents could have a better interface. We were told by all these gentlemen, showed us nice pictures that said, this is how it's going to work. We're seven weeks in, and we don't have it yet. So nobody can deny that, and we're paying 400 times more than we were paying before. That's sort of my frustration. I'm willing to let it try and work, but it gets tiring because gentlemen come up, you can't see the stuff. How does that happen seven weeks in? Are you?
Mr. Hart, just real quick, just following what Mr. Aguirre was saying. Scott, in person from Power School, when do you think that the parents are going to be able to?
So as of 4:00 this afternoon, like I had mentioned previously, the SIMS team here has been able to pull the 14,000-plus codes that we need. Now, what we have to do internally is we have to encrypt that PDF. We're working on that now, 14,000 sheets of paper. It's then going to be sent out via Parent Square to the parents, and then they'll have their six-to-eight-digit code, and they'll be able to download the app and put it on their phone, and they'll be able to see everything. And I anticipate hiccups when we rolled out Parent Square, there were hiccups. But what I need to be able to help the district and to work with Power School is we need to hear these, you know, we have a technology line, we have emails, we have buildings. We need to know these issues. So as the parent codes go out, parents, please contact technology. We'll put some stuff out on Facebook so they know where to contact because we can fix these issues in relatively, most of the time, seconds because there's a couple of clicks of a button within the Power School side or the Parent Square side. But I need to be able to get those fixed, and I can't fix them if people don't tell us. So we just need to have with the buildings and the parents that open line of communication so we can assist at that piece.
So when's the cut, like the date?
So Thursday, Thursday afternoon, Parent Square is, we're hoping, fingers crossed, that it's going to start sending out those emails to parents. We're going to start at the high school level because we have the most emails, and Mr. Damaris and his team have done a phenomenal job here of getting that contact information into Parent Square. So we're going to use that as the test bed, and then we'll roll it out from there. If the high school works and we see numbers start to increase on the Power School side, we'll roll it out to the rest of the district hours after.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything further? Okay, this was only a discussion update. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Power School.
Thank you very much.
Item 12.3, discussion and vote to approve the second read of the school committee's superintendent's goals as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools. Superintendent Ponce.
So as you have my goals in front of you that you referred to the committee last month, I do want to bring your attention to the attendance goal that I went through this multiple times and still have an error in there. So the attendance goal reads by June 2023, in order to promote the learning and growth of all students, the district chronic absenteeism rate will decrease, and then something's missing there. That should say by 10% from the most recent measure, and the daily attendance will increase from 87.6 to 92%. So I will make that correction and upload it in there. Want to make sure. We are still waiting our targets from DESI to fill in that data from the first goal, and the rest, we just made sure that we had specific by November, by whatever, using the feedback that we received, that I received at the meeting.
Any discussion, Mr. Aguirre?
I just think, I thought we talked about at the meeting, waiting until the numbers could come in for the data to be plugged in?
Yes, the student achievement numbers are in, but the DESI sets targets for us as a district. That may not be here for at least a month or two. So certainly, we can wait until next month to bring it back again and wait and see. I have absolutely no problem with that, but the target, the targets have not been released by DESI yet.
Yeah, no, I just thought we weren't getting this until then. The most important piece of this from me would be that information. So if we're going to do some goals, they should be around the data. So I'm not ready to support anything at this point until we can get, if those numbers aren't in, then you could have come up with some other numbers to, I think, measure by. That would be my personal opinion. I'll make a motion to table till next meeting, or table until the data's in.
One second.
Is that all right? We see a superintendent?
Yes.
Okay. Deb, please call the role on the table.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Harp?
No.
Ms. LaRavia?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yeah, another month. 12.4, discussion and vote to approve the central administration's salary ranges as presented
Good evening. The document you see, there were several documents within the packet. The one is the original from the year 2021 when we did the principal's matrix. There was no specific matrix set up for the central office salaries. What they, what that, those ranges that you see was what came off of the original job descriptions as they were approved by the school committee. So that's where those ranges were. What I did was I updated the salary structures for the people that hold those positions as well as the FRAA ranges for the people below them, or in some cases, they were FRAA members or ESNONS, so that you could see the salaries of the people that were below those positions. And then I created a couple of scenarios similar to what we did with the principal's matrix. One was a 5% scenario, one was a 10% scenario, just for your consideration. At this point, we're not really recommending one or the other. We're really more just going through what I would consider to be a first read in your feedback on what direction we should move those in.
Any discussion on the ranges? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I'll yield if anyone else has anything. I don't want to, I don't want to be the only one talking. If anybody else has anything, I'd yield to them.
I've been trying to make sense of it, so I don't know if it's just the way that I'm looking at it. The page three that's on here, the highlighted proposed 5%. Hold on. I'm going to take a step back, and I yield for a moment.
Oh, Mr. Aguirre, I'm sorry.
So I think it was two months ago, we had a debate over salaries for our principals. At that time, it was discussed about, we have some other administrative positions that make zero sense related to how many days a person works and how much their salary is. And I've said it publicly, I'll say it, I've said it privately, and I'll say it again. We have a mess on our hands as far as having a true rationale for who makes what, when, and how many days they work, and the level of importance in the district. So while I don't necessarily have a problem with some of what's being requested here, I think that we- I think that we, we need to take a step back and look at this across the whole district. Because we have things that just don't make sense. And what we have been doing here is, okay, we'll just keep on adding, and we'll keep on adding, and we'll keep on adding, instead of saying we're going to address the issues. Sometimes we continue to hire positions that we know are going to make the problem worse. We don't take a step back and say, wait a minute. We can't have a situation where somebody is making a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in a union that makes two hundred and fifteen days. And we have somebody else, such as the chief information officer, who makes a hundred and nine for two hundred and thirty days. Like, it makes no sense. The order of responsibility, the level of responsibility, it makes no sense. So I don't see this particular piece as a problem in and of itself. But I think we need to look at the whole picture and figure out, how are we going to get this right once and for all? Because we've hired three different assistant superintendents at the present time already. They advertised the job, people applied for the job based on the current range. As far as I'm concerned, you've got to live within that range for those people. We have the time to look at something like this and say, you know what? We've got to look at it so that we can recruit the best and brightest across the Commonwealth, across the country. We have to increase the salaries? The time to do that was in March, when we knew we had three assistant superintendents opening. So we would advertise looking for the best and the brightest potentially. Because people look at the salary only. So I think that this is something that we need to go back to the table. We need to look at it. And we need to fix some of these problems that are on this list of the highest earners in the school department. Like I said, the most glaring ones are union positions that pay two hundred and fifteen days per year. And they're making a lot more money than those that are making, that are working two hundred and forty-two and two hundred and forty-two. The principals work two hundred and forty-two days a year. It defies logic why we have this mess. And it's been like this for year after year after year, and we never fix it. But we want to add another ten percent, another ten grand, another fifteen grand. And I just think it's making the problem worse instead of better. So I, I think, is this the first read, Mr. Coogan? Is that what you said? So. Yep.
It says discussion.
That's fine. So my comments are related to that. I can articulate that as much as anybody would want to know. But I do think that we have a major problem across this district on who gets paid, how much they get paid, and how many days they work. It's not equal, it's not sensical, what we do. And we just continue to do it. And I'm at the point where I don't want to do unsensical things like that anymore. Where that I yield.
So this is, it says discussion and vote to approve. That's just the first reading? Do I have a motion of second on?
There was a motion?
There was, was there a motion?
Is it first read or what?
I'm confused. It says discussion and vote to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion of second, okay. I'm with you though, Mr. Agia. Are we giving this one read tonight and then it's coming back? Or what are we doing? Because it says discussion and vote to approve. I just don't want to do something and then find out we did something.
Well, I'm assuming it's coming back. That's why I made the motion.
So what do we?
You want it to come back, you can't make a motion to approve.
That's what I'm saying.
And I can only go by, Mr. Coogan's here to present. And I took him at his word. He said it was the first read. So how, to this point, that he's here presenting, saying it's the first read. And then on the agenda that gets approved by multiple people says opposite of that, I'm not sure how. But I gave you my two cents, I think everybody else should weigh in. And we should have the superintendent take what we said and come back to us.
All right, let's do that. So then we'll do the same thing we did with the last one. Since it doesn't say first read, let's go with, I'll entertain a motion to table. Yeah, entertain a motion to table. I have a motion of second, Deb, call the roll on table.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. All right, so we got the same situation again, discussion and vote to approve. Is that what this is, an additional SEL position at Talbot?
This is an additional FTE.
Okay, go ahead.
Talbot Middle School currently has two SEL liaisons. The request from the principal is to have another SEL liaison that would be dedicated to the sub-separate strand. There are currently six classrooms in that building and approximately seventy students, between seventy and seventy-five students in that strand. He's looking for some directed response, sort of a first responder type position to assist with that. There are SACS within the school, but again, the SACS are delivering services over a schedule as opposed to responding. He's looking for the additional support in the form of an FTE.
You got a motion of second on this one?
Motion approved with a question.
Motion approved with a second, I got a motion of second, question.
Question for the superintendent, just when we get stuff from only one school, there's probably more to the story than what it looks like. So my only concern is that, what does it look like at one school versus the other, looking at equity? And that chart that Mr. Almeida makes with the school adjustment counselors and the like, I'd like to get the support staff on there as well so we can make an informed decision. But please tell us why you think this is needed there versus that nobody else is asking that, I guess? Is that what I'm guessing?
Well, I mean, we take requests as principals bring them to the forefront. I think fear is not equal. There are some very high needs students at Talbot. There are some very high needs classrooms that Principal Reposo is advocating for. Certainly, we, this committee, and us, we have not turned down when a principal comes to us requesting support. Are we going to say that every single school has to have two SEL liaisons or three? I think that depends on need, because a school may not have the same population and may not have the same need. Principal Reposo came to us, he advocated for that position. There are some, you know, he's got some serious SEL concerns there with students that are, that need support, and he's advocating for an additional position. I certainly, I can give you a breakdown of how many are at each school, but I would caution you to think that we need to have the exact same number at each school because the needs are not the exact same.
Yeah, I would think that the rationale would be something along the lines of the population, the needs, and exactly what you mentioned. And I'm not suggesting that Mr. Reposo can't justify that. I know if he came before us, that he recommended to you, he has the need. I'm not suggesting that he doesn't. What I'm concerned about is, does every other principal have that same ability to say to you or to say to this committee, I have that need and I have this? Or I have, you know, that's what I'm looking at as equity. So when we see something only from one principal, it begs the question of, is there any other positions that have not been brought forth? Or do people know, oh, maybe I, you know, I could use another one of those too because I have. I'm not questioning him or his, that position.
Right.
But I think we just need to know that, that's open to everybody. And any principal, any department that is in need should come to you and say, I'm requesting an extra support. And yet, I think you're saying that that's a yes, but.
We haven't turned, we haven't turned people down. I trust that the principals know their schools the best and they know exactly what they need. And when they have a need, they come to us and then we come to the committee and ask for it.
If I can just clarify what I'm saying. You're saying that you haven't turned anybody down. And what I'm suggesting is, have all the principals and directors of programs, are they feeling free that if they have a need, that they can bring that forth to you? So that they can bring, that has not been the case here in this district. That has absolutely not been the case. So they have been trained not to do such things as advocate for the need, this and that. So rather than say to them, I haven't turned anybody down, is, I make sure I tell them, if you have a need, please bring it. Case in point, last year when we did the Paris for the bilingual students. We didn't know it, brought up from the floor. That shouldn't happen. It should come from the people that are working out there to say, we need extra support and here's what it is. And why I'm asking for the spreadsheet is because we should know. We should know how many SEL liaisons he has versus the other middle schools versus, you know, it's just a comparison for us to see. There can be a comment on it at the bottom that says, because I have this population, I have that population. So I'm not questioning the Talbot one, trust me. I think we should support it. I just want to make sure everybody knows. We have money, we should get the support.
Right, and I believe that they know, but I will reiterate, we have a principal's meeting Thursday. I will reiterate, the principals created that job description together. We created it together. They, I asked them what they needed, we created that position based on what they felt needed to happen. So I will reiterate that. The last thing we want is people to be afraid to come and say, I need this in my school. This is not the time to do that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can I get a motion of second? Motion, I have a motion of second, Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve point six is discussion and vote to approve the usage of the Durfee High School for the class of nineteen ninety-seven reunion as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion approved with a question.
Motion approved with a question. Can I get a second on the motion approved?
Second.
I have a motion of second, discussion?
Just a, just a comment or request. The last time this came before us, I know I asked for something related to that we're covering all our bases with the liabilities and the like. I don't believe, we've seen that, but I'm just, once again, requesting that so that we know what we have. Everything's covered, but I do think it's a worthy organization and I want to support it. So if we can get that, I'd appreciate it.
We got all the liabilities in place there, Dr. Pacheco?
The doctor says yes.
The doctor says yes, okay.
The, on our side of this, we're leasing space, renting space for the amount of time that's requested. The rentee is looking to use that with the, with a vendor who will assume the liability on the alcohol side. So a agency will be doing the serving and taking care of that piece. They're responsible for the liquor license, they're responsible for the police officer. And that piece will be responsible for custodial services and security. The area is, is the first floor, as we walked in tonight. Using that area, the cafeteria will be available and that surrounding area for the hours that's requested. And we do have representatives here from the class of ninety-seven, if you have any further questions.
Yeah, it's got an early ending date time too, nine, nine-thirty, so that's not going to be a late night. So that's good. Anybody have any other questions on the event?
Just one, Kenny, will they be able to walk into the, like, into the gym with a?
No. So basically, what I've offered ahead of time is that if they're willing, and they agreed, we were talking about having certain areas on a tour that they could do. Their suggestion was better than mine, and that was that we will set up an hour ahead of the event. If people wanted to do the tour, they would be escorted to areas of interest. And we would take care of that before the event started. And then basically roll it into the event. The building will be, for lack of a better word, locked down to the area. And then they would be, you know, confined to the lodge, atrium, and this section of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Anything for, we have a motion of second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, and just to that end though, I was here on Saturday for the sixtieth, the class reunion for the, whatever that year was, the sixtieth reunion of the class. They used the granite grill in the lobby. They took them for a tour of the building. It's Manny Papula's class, they were all there, there's a hundred and twenty people. The kids in the granite grill, the culinary kids, all got a paycheck out of it. They served them a buffet. It was really something to see, it was a very good time, and I'm glad they came here. Discussion twelve point seven, vote to approve the first quarter revolving fund as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So in front of you, you have the update on the fifteen revolving funds that we'd have. They all have positive balances. As of the end of September, we're at eleven point seven million dollars across the board in our revolving accounts. With this transfer, as we normally do, there are no expenses in the youth of school account. You'll be approving a transfer of eighteen thousand dollars in overtime, eighteen thousand, one fifty-six ninety-one for the overtime for the sounds light, auditorium use, and for the overtime associated with security and custodians for outside events. Bringing that balance in the account down to four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and two cents.
Motion approved.
I have a motion of second, Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve eight is the discussion and vote to approve the quarterly budget update as presented by Kevin Almeida, the Chief Financial Officer.
So here's, here's the quarterly report. It's been updated by Cost Center for all of our accounts within the operating budget. For, for lack of better words, this is the first shot at this. So I'm actually looking for, you know, some feedback from the committee as to additional information you're looking for. And if, you know, as far as the cost centers go, I've broken down the cost centers to what I believe they should be and what I believe is acceptable. I'm not sure if you want to break down the cost centers any further. But we've, I've broken it down, you know, all the way from art, the art department, all the way down to Watson. I did it in alphabetical order so that the school committee could have it in order to see what all the resources are in the operating budget, broken down by each line item. So you can have a gander. At this time, we've spent, we're at twenty-three, just over twenty-three percent spent through the first quarter. At this time, I'm monitoring transportation. We haven't really paid any transportation bills yet, so to speak. We've paid some, but not many. So I'll have a much further update and overview of transportation come December or earlier if we have any issues, so to speak. But at this time, I have nothing to report in that end, other than I'm monitoring it now and I will have a further update for you at a later time. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Anything on the quarterly report? Mr. Agia?
So on transportation, you have listed that it's two point three million in the hole on the report? So you're saying that's not accurate?
No, so what I'm saying is that I have other funding sources that are going to fund portions of that, of that bill. So we've got the McKinney Vento money. In addition, I have money in Circuit Breaker for transportation to cover some of the auto district transportation. And so because we haven't paid any bills yet, because we haven't paid any bills yet that I'm going to transfer over yet, that's not a true, you know, balance as to, you know, what it's potentially over by, so. And in addition to that, you know, as we always do every year, we encumber all the POs. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend all the POs down. So until I get like a good couple of months of bill paying, I really won't know if we're fully utilizing all the POs that are in place.
Yep, so when you, when you refer to a PO, I'm assuming you mean like, you have a hundred and eighty days of transportation, you're going to have a PO for a hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, and so we have, and we, so we have, correct, we have POs for specific routes, specific vendors. And in some cases, we end up having less, we end up using less, you know, less buses or less vans or whatever the case may be with specific vendors. So there are changes that happen over the course of the year. And until we know exactly what it is that we're riding, you know, I don't want to just speak out of turn and say that, you know, it is what it is at this point.
Yeah, I would, I mean, it's logical that if we had twenty buses, a hundred and eighty days, you know, the PO should call for a hundred and eighty days.
Correct.
Not so sure that's accurate, but it's, you know, it's hard to, if you don't have a PO for the right number of days, we had this issue come up when I had to have a meeting with superintendent, Mr. Pacheco and Mrs. Cabral about it, that the POs are all over the place. And it was agreed to at that time that we were going to make POs for the whole year because it makes no sense otherwise. But I think we're still doing the same thing that made no sense.
No, 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 we're not doing the same thing. We do have POs here for a hundred and eighty days. What I'm saying to you is that, it's, there's potential that these POs are going to be reduced because we're not using all of these vehicles.
And what I'm suggesting to you is that we have POs that are not for a hundred and eighty days. That's all.
Okay.
One, my suggestion would be to add a cost to complete line at the end so we can know where we're at with the budget. I think that's an important piece for us to know whether we have some, you know, extra funds or the like. And my other comment is on the net school spending. So I had made some requests as a superintendent that we're not, July one came when we're supposed to, the city's supposed to fund us at a certain number. That number is not being, is not in our side at the present time, including the nutrition account, which you said was around six hundred and some thousand. So at that time, July one, when we approved the budget based on not having the nutrition account, to me, that's six hundred thousand dollars off right off the bat. So that was July one. We also got a note right around the budget time that there was a problem, one point three million or something like that. So that's almost two million dollars that we don't have current in the budget. I asked for it to be an agenda item so that the committee can know what's going on with it because it's the middle of October, we knew about this in July and it's still not in. I just don't understand.
So we're working with the city. The city's putting forward a transfer for the October twenty-fifth meeting for the one point three million dollars. So that's moving forward. In addition, we are, I am in the final stages of the end of the year report. I plan on submitting it by the end of the week so we can get a clear I plan on submitting it by the end of the week so we can get a clear picture as to exactly where we stand. And next month, I will have further update to the committee as to exactly where we are prior, you know, to submission, prior to the D E S C sending us, you know, their update in February. So you, the school committee will be updated within the next month.
But the nutrition account was off by six hundred thousand. So the healthcare account's going to be off by six hundred thousand.
I, I.
Why does that have to wait for the end of the year report? I don't.
Because, because when the end of the year report's done, balances change, and actuals are all updated for, you know, the twenty-two year, and budgeted figures do change. So it's still a work in progress, so.
So you think we're going to owe, we're going to owe the city money?
Do I think we're going to owe the city money?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe so, but we still haven't finalized the end of the year report, so.
But when we did the budget.
Until I finalize the end of the year report, I will report it out to the committee at that time.
So we have to wait until March to figure out that they're, that they owe us six hundred thousand?
You're not, you're not going to wait until March, Mr. Agar. You're going to know, within the next month, my plan is to have the, I, I've been working on it. I'm finalizing it with the city because I need their, their figures to finalize the information. And once we have it finalized, I will submit the report. And the plan is to submit the report by the end of the week.
But I thought you just said March. That's why I was getting.
No, no. So what I'm referring to is, I'm going to submit the report. We'll know based on our figures where we are at that time. I will report it out to you as a school committee at that time. The D E S C always finalizes what the figures are, usually in the February to March timeframe. At that report, at that time, that point in time, the number will change, as it always does.
Yep.
Changes in the assessments for the charter school and all that. Those things always, always happen. So the numbers will change at that time.
When you, when we present the budget in June or whatever to them, don't, isn't it the law that we have to put an honest budget of what we actually know at that time?
Absolutely, yes.
So what was the healthcare number that was put in?
How much was it?
Yes.
I don't have it in front of me right now, but it was.
It was without the six hundred thousand coming out of it?
Yes, correct. That's, that's.
So that's my point.
You're right.
So if the law says we have to create, when we do a budget, the honest budget with an honest assessment, and after that was already submitted in July, we knew that we took six hundred thousand off because we didn't want to have it last year, which we should have, but that's another story. Why would we not change that in July? Like, so we're sitting on a budget that we know is six hundred thousand dollars in healthcare off? And since July one?
Mr. Agar, I don't disagree with you. I wish I could have the money day one. I don't have the money day one. So I, I agree with you.
So, Madam Superintendent, do you have a comment on why we waited since July without that number?
Well, we're waiting for the city to, we've met with them about that, that money, the money that's owed. We met with them last week, and they assured us we were going to get the money. We've been asking for it, absolutely.
So you asked the city for the six hundred thousand in healthcare?
We went over the figures, yes.
They, they are very well aware of it.
Yep. We went over that and the one point three.
So the city administrator would know that there's two issues going on?
Yep.
One point three million and six hundred thousand?
Yeah, they, they were, they were at the meeting.
Because it, to me, it just is, we should do it. And for the committee members, that means that we have six hundred thousand dollars that we can give more support. If you wait now until March, we're going to say, well, we can't spend it at the end. We're going to play games with it. So to me, the sooner the better so we can actually put it into resources, like Mr. Reposo came down for, for others, so.
And, and for other reasons, it makes it much easier to spend when I know I have it, so.
Yeah, I'd ask once again, let's put that on the agenda for our meeting next, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Just a quick question.
Ms. Rodrick?
It could just be me, but do we not have nutrition on this as a cost center?
No, because it's a revolving fund.
Okay. I was just double checking. Like, I just want to make sure, like, I wasn't missing something because Mr. Agar was bringing that up. Okay. With that, I yield.
All right, can we get a, a motion?
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
Vote, please, Deb.
Mr. Agar?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of items for your information, some retirements, some resignations, and regretfully, some of our former staff passed away. Could I get a motion and second to place on file?
So moved.
Okay.
I got a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agar?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Thumbs up.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee? Hearing none, we have a request for executive session.
There would be a need.
There would be a need. Um, do you want to read them first?
Sure.
Okay.
First, Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven to review and approve the executive session minutes for September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two regular school committee meeting. Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven to review and approve the executive session minutes for the September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting of the school committee. Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-one to review the open meeting law complaint dated October fourth, two thousand twenty-two filed by Patrick Higgins regarding the September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting of the school committee. Mr. Higgins alleges the chairman violated the open meeting law by not announcing the members who were participating remotely. Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three to discuss the strategy with respect to litigation with regards to Russell Costa versus the City of Fall River School Department, Department of Industrial Accidents Board number zero-four-zero-two-nine-five-dash-two-oh as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall River Administrators Association as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the city. Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service employees in the Fall River School System represented by the Fall River Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. With respect to the litigation matter I mentioned, the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a litigation position of the city and the school committee. Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council ninety-three local eleven eighteen as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Fall River School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council ninety-three local eleven eighteen